Pardon the order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our August 29th, Tiverton School Committee meeting. Has anyone signed up for open forum? Okay. Consent agenda, can I have a motion for approval?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor? Mr. Rarick?
Yes, resignations, retirements, leave of absence, Cyber Patriot Advisor, Tiverton Middle School, Jacearo, appointments, interim assistant principal, Tiverton High School, John Duvall, school nurse teacher, Picasset Elementary, Denise Duarte, and part-time lunch recess aide, Ranger School, Melissa DeSantis.
Dr. Black?
Yes, Mrs. Black.
I'd just like to say, welcome to all the new people. And the Cyber Patriot team, we know how awesome that was at the middle school. We had five teams, and I hope that this can be on the next agenda, Cyber Patriot with Project Lead the Way, please, so we can see where we stand with that and get that funded so we can do it at the high school and the middle school, because after they got all those trophies and awards, you'll remember, that year we said, let's have it at the high school, and it was planned to go up there, and I don't know what happened, but Mr. Zaro was amazing, and I hope that, once we reorganize all this, that he'll think of coming back. Because there were three girls' teams, and those are free, and then two boys' teams, and it was like, all over the state, they were talking about it. Those are the warriors of our future, let's be honest, and we want to keep that going. We don't want it to go away, so please, if we could put that on the next agenda, thank you.
I think we're getting crowded already for the 12th, but certainly on the 12th or the 26th. Correspondence, none. Item seven, policy development revision and review, policy 1076, advertisements, second reading?
Yes, the change since the first reading, and we talked about it at our meeting last week, was in the second sentence in the second paragraph. At the high school, during the fall sports season, we added "fall sports season," revenue generated, and the verbiage didn't change. We did add a second sentence, or a new sentence, after where it says cheerleading team. It reads, "During the spring sports season, 100% of the revenue generated from advertisements on the athletic fields will be allocated to the athletic department." And that's what we discussed at our last meeting, and it's reflected in the policy draft.
Can I have a motion for approval of the policy?
I make a motion to approve the policy.
Okay, we need a second first. Okay, any discussion?
I believe that is something we have to work with, that's left up to us to determine what the price is. We'll work with Mr. Murray and whoever else wants to, we don't have a set price. Yeah, I will talk to Mr. Murray about that, we don't have a set price yet. We will.
Anybody else? Mrs. Polish could not be here tonight. Don't think she had any other objections or concerns.
She helped write it, so.
I do want to recognize Mrs. Polish for all the work that, and the research she put in to formulating this policy. I mean, we worked hand in hand, but really, she did an awful lot of research, as did Superintendent Rarick, and a lot of back and forth, so.
Yes.
It's new for our district, and I sincerely hope that it turns into a good, positive thing for our athletics and other activities as well.
Okay, yes, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine A, discussion or approval of general contractor to perform the renovations at the high school and middle school.
Yes, the school, the building committee is recommending that Alborg Construction Corporation's bid of $13,555,000 to service the general contractor to perform the renovations to the high school and middle school be approved. Mr. DiQuatro is providing, in case anyone needs a copy, you have these in your binder. They are the work schedule for the roofs at both schools, as well as the HVA systems at both schools. In order to get the bid to the number that is being recommended, we've had discussions, the building committee, with the contractor regarding the project, and in order to perform, if you look at the schedule on both the HVAC and roofs, we've had discussions on, or the proposal came to us, that Alborg would need to do some of the work during the school day, for on both the roofs, which would occur in the fall, and then the HVA systems that would occur in the spring. And there'd be more work done in the roofs by once school got out. So we wanted to bring that to the committee's attention, because that's a little different than what we'd originally discussed for quite a bit of time, that we thought we could get the work done all during the two summer months. That didn't come to pass. I'm recommending that the committee accept the recommendation from the building committee, and Mr. DiQuatro's here to answer any questions you may have regarding the bid and/or the scope of the work. We had meetings last week with Alborg, Mr. DiQuatro, Dr. Dias Mitchell, Mr. Ashley, the two A.D.s, to talk about how this might possibly impact not only instruction, but also our athletic teams and our PE classes, and we came away convinced that there'd be minimal impact on either the teams and/or instruction at both schools.
So I'll ask for a motion for approval. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Black, um, thank you. So, we've been through this before, Mr. Rarick?
Yes, we have.
Few times? And we've also been through with this company?
Yes.
So you're confident, and the building committee, I think, is fabulous. I'm trusting their work and their judgment.
That's an issue that I brought up, you know, having, as you said, you know, gone through it. We have assurances from, it's a different company, same name, but different principal, and we're comfortable in the building, and, you know, Mr. Odell and Mrs. Zemec are here, so we did have that conversation, and we're comfortable that they'll.
My other question was, I'm sure you thought about the safety of the students, they'll never be alone with these people, right?
No, the students, the employees, I'll let Dave explain the schedule to you, but a lot of the work will be done, some of the work, especially the HVAC work, will be done after hours, in the evenings or weekends, so it won't be done during the school day. A lot of the roofing will be done during the school day, but obviously, they're on the roof, and Dave can explain to you what protocols we'll have in place.
So we're going to incorporate a badge system, where every person's going to have a number or a badge, so the person, if they misbehave in any way, you'll be able to get their number and report them back, so you don't have to say that person.
And they'll all be vetted. They'll all have, the company will produce background checks for us on all the employees that will be working on site. That needs to be produced before the work is started.
And I would assume they'd be limited to the areas?
Yes.
Where they're assigned to work?
Right, where they'll be working, that's correct.
There'll be regular construction meetings, where the principal, superintendent, the assistant superintendent are all invited to that, and it's a two-week look ahead, so you'll be able to know what's going on two weeks in advance, where the areas are, if there's any changes, modifications, what are they. So, there's also a building committee every month, they'll get an update of what's going on, as far as the schedule and progress of the project as well.
And I want to thank you for all your hard work, the building committee, and I'm glad we're starting.
You're off. You turned yourself off.
All right, so anyway, as I said, I want to thank you all for your hard work, and I just want to say, I'm happy we're going to start this, because when we voted for a bond in '02, and I ran in '04, everyone said, I'm not voting for '04, because you didn't do '02 yet. So the people like to see when they vote and pledge their money that it's getting done, so this is wonderful, that you're starting it, thank you, thank you.
Just also, with regard to the general contractor, and, you know, the fact that it is a change in principle, it's a different company, and did the work on Ranger and the other schools. It's also, you know, in the bidding process, we needed to come within a certain number, and one of the things that they suggested we do was to not bond the work, but we rejected that, and so the work is bonded as well, so there is backup to unforeseen events after the work is done.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also like to thank especially Mrs. Zemec, Mrs. Levek, and Mr. Odell, for all of their hard work and invaluable insight, not to mention Mr. Mendez and the other, and principals, Dr. Dias Mitchell and Mr. Ashley.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
With regard to the roofing work, while students are here and in session, will there be any noise issues with the construction vehicles, with people walking on roofs?
Well, we do have tonight the actual roofer here, Joe McKenna, McKenna Roofing, that's the bulk of the work, it's probably more than 50% of the work, and Glenn didn't show. Glenn called me up, he's in traffic, there was an accident on 195, he's due here any minute as well. But I don't know, Joe, if you want to talk a little bit about some of your actions, some of the process, whatnot?
Hello, yeah, I think that most of the demolition work will be done before school begins. Any of the hoisting of material and discarding of the old material will be done before and after students and faculty and pedestrians are here. We will only access the building from the exterior. We will not have the need for any electricity. PortaJohn facilities will have exterior egress, so I don't anticipate a lot of disruption at all. Probably going to need an idea of when the buses and so on, when everything begins, but predominantly, most of it'll be done, I don't know if you can hear foot traffic now, if somebody was up there now, but it shouldn't be any more than what you currently hear now.
And with regard to the quote, the price quote, where does that put us within the whole project budget? Are we right on target?
It gives us, yes, it gives us about $800,000 in a contingency fund, because we've had, we backed out our costs for RGB, and then the bid, it's about $800,000, right? The last time we left it. So this would leave us with about $800,000 for any, for any unforeseen issues. Which is about 7%, Dave, of the project, which is a little higher than 5, which is the norm.
So Glenn Alborg just showed up, if anyone had any questions for the general contractor, he's here tonight as well.
I'm good.
I apologize for being a little tardy. There was an accident on the Washington Bridge, it set me back a little bit. But I'm Glenn Alborg, Alborg Construction Corporation, just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the construction or the schedule.
Mrs. Black?
No, they've been answered, they've been answered.
Anyone from the public?
We've been at a total duration of approximately 14 months, start to finish, in the study. We should be substantially complete with new heating systems completely operating by October 15th of next year. Roof should be completed by August of next year, if not soon. All the new roofs will be completed by April or December.
And one of the other issues that we've worked with Glenn on is that they will be patching the areas in both schools where we have immediate leaks now, so that no more damage will be done until they can get to, for example, the cafeteria here at the high school and other areas will get patched, so again, we'll stop any further damage until the work can get done per the schedule.
Okay, we have a motion for approval on the floor, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
And what I'll be doing is sending the contract forward to Attorney Robinson, and assuming everything's good with the contract, we'll start up ASAP.
And I have to sign that at some point, or you sign that?
You'll probably have to sign it.
All right. Item nine B, request for middle school coed soccer team approval.
Yes, you have a request from Jeanette Lopes to be, for consideration, to begin a coed soccer team at the middle school. I spoke with Ms. Lopes this morning, we're finally able to get in touch with each other, and we talked about her proposal, and she's done a lot of work on it, and she wants to share with you what she has, and I have some information that I was also able to find out about, you know, proposed program that we probably should talk about as well.
Mic on.
There you go.
One of the things I was thinking of with middle school sports, after talking also, I know Mrs. Mitchell also did with Senator Edwards, was that there's lots of research that shows that education, great education goes along with athletic programs, but not only athletic programs, after-school programs as well. And I can share that I am a product of it, I started playing basketball when I was five years old, and it got me through middle school, high school, I got a scholarship to play college basketball, and I graduated with a 3.8 GPA because of sports, how much I wanted to play. So that's what started driving me. And about a year ago, I came out of church one day and ran into Mr. Doug Reed, who is the Tiverton Youth Soccer Director of the Competitive League, and he said, well, why don't we have anything at the middle school? So at that time, I actually started investigating it. One of the things that we're dealing with, with Tiverton Youth Soccer, because a lot of people will come out and tell you, well, we have a league, is that it's not really inclusive, because sometimes what happens is, certain kids get cut from the team for certain reasons or whatever, but in addition to that, the Soccer Rhode Island has put forth this new rule that has a lot to do with birth year. And so this year, a lot of kids, I want to say about five boys and three girls, got cut because of their birth year. So there's nowhere for them to play unless they want to spend $3,000 to play club teams, which is just not feasible. So I began really to really investigate this, and so you'll see, as of my agenda, we tried to break it down so that we could cover everything that could possibly be of a financial burden, and we tried to take care of it. So if you look at the agenda, the first thing is a coed team. And my also, my theory is to, when we have a coach, which basically, it would be Coach Ed Mello, who said he would do it on a volunteer basis, he is also right now certified, so we wouldn't have to worry about anyone who's certified, and he already helps out at the high school level. So he has all of the certifications and years of experience. And my policy that I'd like to see is what we call a 50-50 policy, because if it's coed, we need to make sure that the girls and boys are getting equal time. So if they instill it at the beginning, when you have that parent meeting or that meeting with the kids, you let them know it's 50-50. It's our first year there, if we do get across, so we're not looking at a win-loss situation, we're looking at the kids just getting exercise, having fun, and really, you know, participating in the sport. The second thing was the uniforms. I've been working with Civil Design for years, they actually do my summer uniforms for my girls' basketball team, I'm the varsity girls' coach at the high school. And because I have this great relationship, I've known him for about maybe five years, because I worked with him, he said that he could really work with us for uniforms if we wanted to do parent donation, so if you could please change that last word to donation. He said home, away, and shorts jerseys for only $20. And I do have a petition here with over 40 signatures of parents who are in agreeance that they would make that type of donation for our children. The third thing is the field. I had an extensive talk with Bob Murray, who is the A.D. at the high school, who told me that they do not use the lower baseball field at all at the middle school, and that's so much space that they can practice. In addition to that, they have six nets at the high school, which two of them we can use. One of them is a little damaged, which we did have someone who's an expert in the nets and can get it fixed, but we would consider even taking the worst of the two nets down there just for their practice. And in regards to equipment number four, we would need the soccer balls, the nets, and the uniforms, and if, so if we have the nets, then again, we're looking for parent donation, which all of our children now, who play, have their own ball. So it's not, that's not difficult to get four or five soccer balls to each practice. In regards to the schedule, we've had several conversations back and forth with the Ripco president, and the last communication was just about maybe two hours ago with Steve Schreiner. And he said, because it is our first year, he said, the only precedent we have with coed is Little Compton, they do coed as well. And he said that we would consider this what we call a scrimmage year, where we could have eight games, six to eight games, and they would be scrimmage games, but, and then, if the coach and the A.D. want to reach out to other teams, they have the ability and the capability to do that, so they will kind of put us on for this year. And it starts the second week of September. Also, they are considering putting all of our games away, so that we don't have to worry about home field. In regards to busing, what we really looked at was donations. And on our signature, on our petition, we have several people that actually own companies and run companies, that they are sustainable donations, that said to us that they're going to be sustainable donations for each year, even one company who said, it's the Fishbowl in Fall River, that their child is only in the fifth grade, but they will still, and you know that middle school sports start at sixth grade, said that they would also make a maximum of a $500 sustainable donation each year, in addition to Gilbert's Jewelers in Fall River, who said that he would make an $800 donation. And Amy, I have to say this right, I apologize, Gaskamini?
Gaskaminsky.
Thank you very much. She stated, she stated that she also works with LCC Fleece and Concord Electric, and Concord Electric has actually went to their CO, because they're trying to make a sustainable, and they have no relation to the school, which is great, because that's going to be a sustainable donation every year as well. So she's waiting to find the amount that they want to donate to us, so, you know, minimum, even if it's only 500, again, it's sustainable income every year, so that we can present to the school committee, basically, zero funds to get this going. So that was the issue with the busing, was making sure. So at this point in time, we probably do have enough in donations to maybe cover the six or eight games for this year, and my hope is to, you know, take the hat off and pass it on to the parents in years to come, because we will have at least three sustainable, but maybe we can get more, including Senator Edwards, who told me that I can't necessarily tell you it's sustainable income, although you'll get it every year, he said, because it's a legislative donation. And because it's a legislative donation, it's not sustainable, but they are going to look, he said it could be anywhere between $2,000 and $5,000. So I just think, you know, he said what he would normally do is just turn it over to the school department, and then it would be divvied up between the sports teams. And the last thing on the list is referees. Right now, from the Ripco president, we have it's about $30 to $40 per game. So if we do have around eight games, you're looking at around anywhere between $300 and $400. And again, with the consistent donations we have, we do have enough to cover that, but in addition to that, had conversations with parents who signed the petition, who are saying, well, that would only be around $15 or $20 per parent, why can't we just do parent donation? So all in all, if we're doing, looking for parent donation between uniforms and refs, they're not looking more than $40, which I think the parents who, kids play competitive soccer with my children, can tell you that we've paid hundreds of dollars for one season. So this is, you know, a drop in the bucket, so that is our plan. I think that the reason why, we've had a lot of folks say, well, why soccer and not anything else? The way we looked at it with, you know, baseball and softball is, you'd have to do two different teams, if you do coed, it's financially feasible to do. In addition to that, soccer, I believe soccer is the best option to start after basketball and cross-country, because considering both cost and then the number of available talented players is significant, so it brings costs down, because of, if we're looking for parent donation, we have an abundance of kids for parent donation. So that's why I think that soccer is probably the next best sport to begin next. Do I truly believe in all the other sports? Definitely, I'd love to see a softball team, I'd love to see a baseball team, and maybe even, you know, football or track. And so my comment is, I really invite all the parents to get involved the way we have, and seek out those funds the way we have, so that those other sports can also, you know, begin in the middle school as well.
Okay, thank you.
After my conversation with Ms. Lopes, I called the, I probably have the title wrong, but I believe it's the associate director. This league comes under the Interscholastic League, and they assign principals and vice principals to run them, and the person that runs soccer is the assistant principal over at Thompson. So I called him, because his number was on the website, and I asked, because I had some questions about coed, because what Ms. Lopes is proposing is, by coed, I originally, when I, before talking with her, I thought coed was, we were going to have a boys' team and a girls' team, and they would both travel together. This proposal is that we would have a mix of boys and girls playing boys' teams of other schools, not mixed teams, according to Mr. Campion, the person who I spoke to. And he, and again, this is something that we would have to get clarified, he said that it would be 10 to 12 games, and they would all be away games, since we didn't have a home field to play on, and so that's just something that I would have to clarify. Also, he said that it would be another day or so before he got approval to add us, to consider us, because they do have the request, and he said it would be another day or two before we got official approval. You know, if we were going to do it, it would be a couple days out. So the question, or the concern, and I spoke, I see Mr. Dakota's here, I met with him and Mr. Schreiner earlier this summer as well, and the issue from where I've been or sit is, I'm in favor of anything that we can do for our kids after school, athletically or otherwise, any type of extracurricular activity. However, the issue that we have, that the committee has to take under consideration, or I ask you to consider, is the sustainability moving forward. Currently, we are now funding three teams at the middle school, at the boys' and girls' basketball team, and the cross-country team. Originally, the parents from the different groups came before previous school committees and said, we'll sustain it, we'll have the money. Well, as the parents' children graduate, the enthusiasm to fund diminishes, to the point where I met with Mr. Schreiner and Mr. Dakota's this summer, and I told him, I said, we'll take care of, and we'll cover, and we've been covering, what the boosters can't generate to cover. But right now, there's three teams that we're essentially paying for now, plus, Boys and Girls Lacrosse started the same way at the high school, parent volunteers, and again, they're great programs, but they've been absorbed by the district. So you need to take that under consideration as well. Whatever, even if they get, we can get the confirmation for all the different things, you know, A, will we be letting the league, how many games will it be? You know, if we get all that straightened out, the bigger question is, do you want to add another team for this purpose? Because our practice, and I'm not saying it will be with this program, but for the previous that I just mentioned, we have added them and absorbed them into our budget. And once they get absorbed into our budget, that means they're also subject to being reduced, and we are facing a fiscal cliff next year. We got a dollar this year. Not confident that it won't happen again, I'm confident that it probably, unfortunately, will happen again. So then, how are we going to make up a half a million dollars, or whatever our number is, to balance? So you can't make, I ask you to, this decision isn't made in a vacuum, it's not just a standalone request, because on the merits, it's a great request, to get our kids involved after school, but you need to consider all of that, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Dr. Dias Mitchell, anything to say?
Thank you, Jeanette, for all you've done. I did propose a soccer team for a few years in a row, and let's face it, when we get a buck more, the previous, from the previous year, we have to look at sustaining what we already have. Superintendent Rarick is correct, my five years here, we have absorbed, I would say, maybe 75 to 85% of the costs of cross-country and basketball, happily. of cross-country and basketball, happily, with grants also from the legislature and fundraising from the boosters. I've eaten a lot of cookies, or a lot of cookie dough. I'm a soccer mom, you know, in my day, so I'm all for it, as you know. There's a lot to consider, a lot to consider. I think we forgot about league fees, that's another component here.
And I'm sorry, just to follow up, the fee rang a bell. Mr. Campion said, I asked him, what are the referee costs? You know, you need two referees. He said the rate is $50 to $55.
Per game?
Per game. So when we, if this happens, and we go to Bristol, Kicking Mewitt, they, the coach would need to bring a check, and give it to whoever is running it over there. Also, just quickly, and I apologize, Laurie, the uniform issue. We have to, the uniform issue, the donation would, based on our policies, my interpretation is, that the money would have to be provided to us ahead of time, because the kids have to have the uniforms. We can't say, Bobby, you have to pay now. They have to be able to, we have to be able to provide it. We can't, it's not a pay-to-play state.
And has to be completely modeled.
Right. And it's one thing, if the parents donate the money, that's great, and they put it all in a big lump sum, that's fine. But the money would have to be, you know, to the school department. And again, those are the finer pieces. I'm sorry, Laurie, I apologize.
Don't worry about it. We did have a very robust intramural program a few years ago. Jeff Heath, single-handedly. He had a lot of help as well, but it really was his brainchild. That was really a wonderful program after school. It cast a wide net. There were no issues with transporting kids. All kids had access with our late buses, Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. It was free. We did ask for donation. So that's, I think, an option, you know, to start with. I'm a yes person, I'm a half glass full, but rubbing nickels together to float cross-country and boys' and girls' basketball. Steve Schreiner will attest to that. It really has fallen on Steve and the boosters, my secretary, Laurie Lubey, and I to administer those. And I've even gone to Dick's and bought the wrong-sized basketballs. I did not know girls had a different size. So, you know, I want to say yes, but maybe think about an intramural program, where all of our kids, five through eight, can be on teams, they can get rides home, it's free, it's equitable in terms of access, no kid needs a ride anywhere, or a ride back from an away game. It's the most bang for our little bucks.
Okay, so at this point, in order to proceed with discussion on the part of the committee, we need a motion on the floor? Would anyone care to make one?
Yes, I'd make a motion to approve this with more discussion. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, so Mrs. Black, any questions?
No, I'm not starting.
Huh? That's it? That's it?
I said I'm not starting.
You're not starting, oh. Well, alphabetically, I thought, all right. Elaine, you're reverse alphabetically.
Jeanette, how many sign-ups, or how many possible sign-ups do you think you'd have for the program as it stands now, parents who are interested?
Well, I have over 40-something on our petition, but after a long discussion with Mr. Murray, he thinks that there's a possibility of kids leaving cross-country to come over to soccer. We have an abundance of soccer players. Right now, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, I know that there are 10 to 12 girls that are in the eighth-grade competitive division. And then there's probably, I want to say the two U-14s we have are 13 and 13, so that's just 26 girls. And that's not counting the boys. So our thought is, we can at least have anywhere between 30 and 40 kids actually just sign up. And that's 30 and 40 parents that are willing to donate, that are on here, that are willing to donate.
Sign the petition.
Sign the petition and willing to donate for uniforms and for referees.
Well, I'm going to take signing the petition as a, you know, a positive support, but not necessarily joining the team, I would guess.
Well, it can't be if we're going to do tryouts, but what it was is, when I had the folks sign the petition, I made sure it was very clear that we, you know, that the school does have, the school department has a policy and a no-pay. And I said, we are looking for donations, and that's why all the other donations came out of it, from Fishbowl, and from Gilbert's Jewelers, and from Elsie Fleece and Concord Electric, was because we were looking for those sustainable donations, so that it would come every single year. In addition to letting the parents know, we're looking for, you know, parents to step up and donate, so that we can actually, you know, when my daughter's out, I have another son coming up, and my goal is to be there for sustainability, so that each year, we are donating our money for uniforms and our referees. And then my hope is, in regards to the uniforms, it's the same thing that we saw with the girls', you know, basketball and the high school soccer team, is I want to leave the uniform there that my child has when they go up to the high school, so then it decreases. It increases our resources, but decreases the need for further donations in that area in the future. And most of our soccer uniforms, I want to say, my daughter still has the one that she had from U-12, because I got it big for her. So pass the donations down, the uniforms down, keep them there, so that the kids coming up don't have, the parents don't have to make that type of donation, which opens up more donations towards refs and other materials we may need.
Okay. How many team members do, would you anticipate being on the team?
Because it's coed, I can see it being at about 30. And they don't have roster rules necessarily, and I know that Little Compton has a bunch, because they do coed as well, and they have high numbers. So I could probably picture it being anywhere between, you know, 25 to 35 kids.
Okay. Can you, you had mentioned something about this being a scrimmage year, can you gloss that for me a little bit?
Yeah, that's why I was a little concerned with the discussion that Mr. Rarick had with the soccer director, I believe, because Mr. Schreiner and myself spoke to Jared Vance, who is the president of the Ripcoa.
Please, Bob's, Super Bob's.
Okay.
Campion runs the middle school soccer, and
Jared Vance.
He runs all the soccer.
Yeah.
So he's one up on the food chain.
And what he told us is that it was going to be a scrimmage year for us. If they could add us, it would be what we call the scrimmage, so there'd be non-league games, we'd still have about, and he told me about eight non-league games.
So does that mean it just doesn't count in the standings?
Doesn't count in the standings.
Which to me thinks, you know, you divide a team, and you
It doesn't count against the team you're playing.
It doesn't, yes.
It doesn't go against their league record.
Right. It doesn't go against their league record, but it gets us involved, it gets us in the league, so that in the next year, it'll be a little bit easier to be formally placed in the league and have scheduled games.
Okay.
And in addition to that, I do want to express that I am a soccer mom as well, and I have three kids that play soccer, and I'm a basketball player, so this blows my mind. But the girls, a lot of times, because of these new rules with Soccer Rhode Island, they play with the boys a lot, a lot. And my son's U-14 division a couple years ago, ended up losing about three or four players towards the end of the year, and they took on five of the girls, who unbelievably outplayed the boys. I have no concern, and I'm sure a lot of parents can speak to it today, we have no concerns with our young ladies playing with these young gentlemen.
Okay. Elaine, anything?
Do you have something?
I have to, yeah.
I just, I don't know, I just, depending on how you vote, if it's a move forward, or if you're thinking of voting in favor, the question about the money for the buses and everything has to be, that has to be solidified.
Yep.
And when we're talking about, okay, this year's a scrimmage year, and again, that's, you know, that's great, well, what's next year entail? Is it going to be a boys'-girl? In other words, what does that lead to? And then what costs are associated with that? Because if you're going to have two teams, if you're going to have a boys'-girl team, then you've got to have transportation for two, because one team will play home, the other plays away, then where do you play your home games? Because right now, the practices will be held on the baseball field, up here at the high school. But that's not a soccer field. So those are, there's a lot of questions that, you know, that we need some answers to at some point.
Mrs. Farmworth?
This is a tough one, Jeanette. I actually, last night, tried to do a little bit of research as I was preparing for today. You know, the thought came to mind, well, what if these kids that aged out of Tiverton Youth Soccer, maybe we could put them on the JV at the high school? I mean, I, I come up with things, you know, and it didn't
Yeah, we've already researched that, and you were told no, and I don't know if anyone from
That was what I found in my research.
Middle school players, middle school can't play at high school.
Six through eight, nine through 12. I learned, yeah. So I mean, I was looking for anything. I really do like the idea, potentially, of rethinking this and opening up as intramurals for five through eight, which would encompass, give the ability for all of the children in that age group the opportunity to play. It's not a competitive league, so they wouldn't be cut. Obviously, the cost could be much more contained, if you are keeping all of your games right at Tiverton Middle School, or whatever, you know, wherever it's decided that they need to be.
Well, would we be able to have the games in intramurals? Because we don't have the field, because Bob Murray told me we have no access to the soccer field.
We have fields, fields, fields.
You don't, you don't have access in the fall, all the fields are taken.
What about the elementary school, now you're talking about middle school?
Then we'd be talking about traveling as well.
I would like to think we could work something out, I mean.
We, the issue is something that needs time to examine.
Exactly, exactly.
And as I talked to Mr. Dakota's and Mr. Schreiner, one of the big issues is field, never mind the cost, but just from a practical standpoint, assuming everything's great, and we had a pile of money over here, and, you know, where do they play? That's the issue. Yes, we have fields at Town Farm, but they're middle school students, we would have to transport them, whether it's, even if it was just for games. We had to do this for the girls' baseball team, when they didn't have a field to play on. We had to transport, we had to have a bus, take them down and back if they didn't have rides. Because we provide it. Rhode Island, if you provide the sport, you've got to provide the transportation. So if you're practicing a plane there, you have to have the students transported there. I've talked to Attorney Robinson today, again, just to refresh my memory, and he said, there's two things, if you wanted parents to drive, the district would have to do. One, call the trust, and see what, because they're our insurer, to see what they have to say. And then secondly, he said, if the trust gives you a green light, you then have to have a policy to vet who's driving the kids. Because it's one thing if I drove my child, but, you know, who's driving the children? And he's, in his own words, he said, he'd advise that that get fully vetted before. If you were going to say, parents drive, get it fully vetted first.
So, Phil, I have a question about that. There's a lot in law that I was able to find that specifies what constitutes district-provided transportation, and kind of what it has to be, and all this other stuff. Is there really, is there actually a requirement in law that if an activity is sponsored by the district, that transportation has to be provided? And the reason I ask that is because I know at least some activities, it is up to the parents to transport their children to the site of the activity that is an interscholastic competition of some sort.
It's a question that I think I know the answer to, but I'm not, Steve would have to answer it, for sure. I know that we do have parents take children, their own children, they may take other children to, you know, when there's maybe five or six kids participating in something, the parents transport. I'm not sure if we're on solid ground on that.
Okay.
Steve would have to advise us on that. I'm not, I'm not so sure about that.
I think we probably need to clarify that, and then maybe, maybe stop asking some questions, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not, that's for Attorney Rob, again, Attorney Robinson to answer, not Superintendent.
Okay, I think we need to ask him.
Yes, well, I think we need, we need him to, to be present.
It seems to be the single biggest cost, anyway, associated with anything like this, is the transportation.
Absolutely.
All right.
My biggest concern is, you know, to use your term, Mrs. Lopes, sustainability. You know, we haven't gotten any, and I wouldn't have expected to get a written guarantee from anyone, that we would have repeated donations beyond year one. And as the superintendent mentioned earlier, we as a district are very much concerned over the sustainability of all of our programs. And I really hesitate to add any additional programming, whether it be academic sports or any at this time, because of that overall concern. If there's a way that we can maybe be creative to allow for these kids to play somehow, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's why we looked for donations that were sustainable, like Amy from the Fishbowl. She actually
There's no guarantee that any of these businesses, well, I know Gilbert's has been around for decades, but no guarantee that it's truly going to be sustainable. You don't have it in writing, you don't have a contract.
And I think that's the next step that we were talking about, because Amy herself was going to, like, LLC and the Concord Electric, to see if they would do that and put it in writing, because they know that there needs to be that sustainability for those donations. And that's why, you know, we're very close to getting that, and being in ru, and I do know, we're talking with Amy, that she has agreed that it's going to be sustainable. And like I said, her child's not even old enough to play, and she's willing to continue that donation, and have it be a sustainable donation. So like, if we do, you know, continue to investigate whether or not we can call it maybe a middle school club team, and have all of the parents transport the way we do now with Tiverton, you know, youth soccer, if it's making sure we have liability as well as signing a waiver, then all the donations, the sustainable donations that we do have, we can, we don't need to put them towards busing, it can go towards other things.
Elaine, you have something else?
When does season begin? When would you have to have a definite answer?
The second week of September. I think the first scheduled division game is September 11th or 12th.
But if it's, if it's a scrimmage, and again, this is, you know, we've got to get clarification from the interscholastic league, and also approval, is if it's a scrimmage, then it's really at the, the team.
Decision of the teams.
The team, when do they want to play a scrimmage game? So it's, they got their schedule, and, you know, they've got one game, maybe they play two games a week, and one week they got one game, then they would say, okay, we'll play Tiverton on such and such. So it's, it's a good question, when does it start? But it's, since, if we wouldn't be in the league, there's, I think there might be some more flexibility as far as time goes.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. Did I turn it off again?
I don't know.
Okay.
You're on.
Okay, this is something I'm very passionate about, not emotional, but passionate, it's a big difference. All my kids went here and played sports. My daughter could kick anybody's, you know what, against any guy. I don't have any question about that.
Mine too.
She went all through college, and same as yours, but anyway. I'm on the Tiverton Health and Wellness Chair, and also Tiverton Prevention. And I know this is called a protective factor, and anything we can do to keep the children safe and supervised between three and six, when houses are empty, because people are working, is amazing. I think there's a lot of work been done to this. I agree with Mrs. Farmworth and Mr. Rarick, I know, and we can't have, we're not saying we'll have it passed this year. We're telling you honestly, with the Durham Law, we don't have any money. But if parents are willing to come forward and do all this work, and get these donations, as you said, it's not just from a parent, because if they go from eighth to ninth, you've lost that money. So I think this is a wonderful idea, and there's questions also for Mr. Rarick on whether it's a scrimmage or whatever, if we can even be allowed to do it. But I would support this, after all those questions are pending, but letting you know that we can't commit to another year after, you know, we did the others, and I'm really happy about it, as you said, the basketball and the track. And many people have called me, asking me why we don't have many more things after school. I said, we have a lot more than we did when my children were there, which is good, we really do, and I'm really proud of this district for working so hard. But you have worked very hard, and this is a very good proposal. So pending all those other questions, I would support this. But as we say, just for the year, if you can get the money, because we all know we don't have any money. Everybody's looking under all the black.
One of the key questions, obviously, assuming approval comes from the interscholastic league, the big question, as Dr. Larkin pointed out, in my opinion, is the busing question, transportation. Obviously, if, you know, it comes to pass that, yes, private transportation's an option, obviously that solves some problems, you know, it's obviously, that solves some problems, you know, as far as making the program run for this year. I agree with Mrs. Black that it should be, if you do consider it one year and see how it goes. But I would recommend to the committee that we get the answers to those questions, including having Attorney Robinson come to our next meeting, which I think is the 12th, 11th or 12th, regular scheduled meeting, and have him explain, answer questions from the committee, folks from the audience, because again, I don't, you know, he's, he's our attorney, and he would know for sure, and answer specific questions, because we get some kind of general questions, but, you know, he's, he's the man. And by then, we'll also have an answer from the trust. We'll call the trust and see what they advise us on as well.
So could we vote to give a tentative approval?
So the motion on the floor is really to approve moving forward, it's not allocating any funds? I think that's
I would, I would recommend that you allow me to come back with the answers to the questions. But it's up to you, because you need to hear what Attorney Robinson has to say, because I don't know what the answers are to those questions.
Okay. Any members of the public would like to speak? Mr. Mendez?
I have one.
Could you come to the podium, please, aside?
One thing, right now, we have one guy outside, as everybody knows, to do the fields. He spends every week ten hours lining what we have. There'll probably be another hour, hour and a half tots to redo a soccer field. We did not buy the paint this year for that field. We bought just enough paint for us to do what we have.
Okay.
Each five-gallon pail is $200 or more, and that's going to be done on a weekly basis.
Just for practice?
Yeah, we don't need the lines for
You don't have any, you can go with a blank field.
We don't need it, because it, all the games are scheduled, hopefully, according to
How about for your practices?
They don't need lines. They don't use lines over at Town Farm. They practice everywhere.
Plus, Mr. Murray would have to sign off on his baseball field in line for soccer.
He would have to sign off, please?
Which I don't think he's been asked.
I'm sorry?
Are there any questions we don't want to ask?
No, I said, Mr. Murray would have to sign off on having his baseball field lined for soccer.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think, there's no, we don't think we have a need for it.
It was, it was good enough that, you know, he was allowed, because that field, it gets very wet and can get chewed up very easily, so to even allow practice there is what I would consider a big, a big achievement, because that's usually, you know, it's like Fenway Park, nobody uses it except for the, when the season starts.
Um, I do have one more question. It just came to mind, we're talking about the baseball field immediately behind the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Practice?
The practice field, excuse me, we're talking lower field here at the high school for practice. That's where our varsity baseball team plays.
Oh, no, 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 we're talking at the baseball field
Then where's he going to practice?
He practices on the upper football, with the upper soccer field at the middle school.
That lower field for the
He doesn't practice on the baseball field?
No.
Oh, I apologize.
He's up where they do the
I was, I apologize. I thought he was giving up his big field.
No.
Oh.
So that
Okay.
Leads me to a new question. What about Tiger Cubs? Your kids are outside on nice days.
No, not there.
On nice days in the fall.
Yeah, and we use the top. We go wherever
They use the top, but in addition to that, the area where the baseball diamond is, they have no need to be there. They're going to be in the grassy area all the way in the back, which is a lot of land for them to practice soccer. They wouldn't be anywhere near the diamond and/or the left grass field.
It's not soccer area.
It's not a soccer area. They won't be on the dirt.
No.
Way in the back, right.
Way back, closer to the fence.
Okay, yeah. It's been a while, I'll have to take a wipe.
Well, my kids went to Tiger Cubs, so I was there every day to pick them up, so I know the field very well.
My memory's getting hazy.
Any other public comments, members of the audience? We have a motion to approve going forward, so I'm going to, I again want to point out this is not an allocation of funds, it's really just an approval to go forward, and I agree with Mr. Rierick that if we approve the motion, we do need to have a number of questions answered, including the issues around transportation, as well as a really very firm, detailed budget of where the money is coming from and what the expenses that that budget is going to meet, because again, we are not allocating any funds to support this. Having said that, I would encourage us to sort of bifurcate our thinking a little bit here and think of things as short-term and long-term. And I think at this point, we have a short-term opportunity that appears to have been well thought out, and funding seems to have been identified, so it is not a cost to the district. And in that instance, I agree wholeheartedly with Mrs. Black that this is a, a, what'd you call it, a protective?
It's called a protective factor.
Yeah. That really, involvement in sports is very important, not just for the fun of it, but also for the character development and the support of the child. And I'd rather really try and fail than not try at all. So I think that I would encourage supporting the motion to move forward, again, understanding that we really have a lot of questions still to answer, but at least we can kind of move things forward. The second thing I think we really need to examine is the long-term issues of both the budget, and I think we need to start to ask for what we need to educate well-rounded young people, and we need to make that case. And we need to continue to meet the challenge of people who will try and thwart us in that effort by finding things in the charter that are not there. But we also need to look at things that might be valuable alternatives, such as intramural sports, and again, other sports that I think would really benefit all our children. In that regard, that might be something that we could look at more globally with our new finance committee to sort of say, well, if we're going to have these sports, and again, sometimes it's one year where you are, you know, have a lot of enthusiasm, and we recognize that it's very valuable, but as probably everybody in this room can attest, it's a relatively small group of people that show up to actually continue to support things. And so that can drop off, and we really need to sort of say, well, what is sustainable, both for middle school sports and, and our budget and what it's going to cost us? So having said that, I would support the motion, and if there's any other comments or discussion or questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
So the motion would be to approve pending resolution of open items?
Correct.
And with no commitment of funds, and it would be a one-year trial?
Correct.
And then I'll report back on the 12th. We'll have Attorney Robinson, and we'll have
But we can move
Right, and we can move forward.
Yes.
We can pursue it further, right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your work.
Thank you, Jonna.
Thank you.
Okay, number 10 announcements. I only have one, which is that I received communication from the Charter Review Commission asking us to meet with them on September 7th. Unfortunately, that will be before we have our next scheduled meeting, and it was not posted to discuss budget, or charter proposals with them at this meeting, so we don't have the opportunity to discuss that. I have put in a call to Mr. Coulter, but have not yet heard back from him, asking him to, this is a three-month process that they are going through, asking different boards and commissions and, and other entities for their suggestions. So I'm hoping to get a later date. If not, I think open meetings prevents us actually from making any suggestions to them unless we have another meeting, and I'm hard-put to find a time when we can have another meeting between now and September 7th. So I am hoping to reschedule that, and I would like to put on the agenda for September 12th, and I will forward to you the kind of form that they want us to use in making proposals, so that we can spend a fair amount of time on the 12th, actually hashing out what we think would be important proposals to the Charter Review Commission. If they come back and say, no, you can't have no other time than September 7th, we will need to try and schedule a meeting, or say, sorry, we can't, as a committee, at least make such proposals.
They won't say.
I hope not.
They have three months. One would like to think that they would
They have here, don't they?
Yeah, I hope, well, they, I'll send the letter, but it was basically saying that they are going through this three-month process of soliciting suggestions. But I think, sort of, just to understand that on the 12th, we really need to think a lot about Charter Review, and, you know, everybody should bring their proposals.
Will there be, I know this is, are there forms for us to use?
Yes, there is. I will, I will forward it to you.
Okay.
I think it was attached to the email I received from them.
Okay.
And, and it's basically, I'll kind of give you the gist of the letter, it was, you know, say the charter should do X, say why you, the charter should do X, and that's that. It's not a debate of anything they've taken up so far, it's not a debate of the merits of what, you know, they're not going to, they may ask some questions, but they're not going to sort of say, well, you know, that's a really great idea, or that's a really crazy idea, or
And our input would be limited to school?
That's less clear to me. I had that same question. I think that there are certainly parts of the charter that are not labeled as being part of the governance of the schools, but certainly impact us. So I think anything that has to do with the budget, you know, we are the biggest part of the budget.
1218.
There's actually not that much in the charter about how the school committee works.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, I mean, there's, we've all seen some proposals that people have made, but that would be, you know, sort of their proposal. I think the stuff that's in the charter as it exists about the school district doesn't, you know, I don't have, see any huge problems with it right at the moment.
Okay.
But it's worth our while to read it and see what, what does it really say?
Yeah. Okay. You all set with that?
Yep.
I've been, Superintendent Rierick forwards to us the Commissioner of Education's field memos, pretty much on a weekly basis, and I read them regularly. I took special interest in the one we got last week, and I said to myself, you know, I think we need to be discussing this, some of these items here at the school committee level, at least for, if for no other reason for awareness of how our district plays into some of these things.
Okay.
For example, you know, last week's spoke to snow day guidance, that's a hot topic on the state level right now.
Yeah, I know.
They had lengthy discussion over individual learning plans. They spoke of a mental health program for middle and high school students. They also had some guidance on determining residency for schools, and this is just, you know, I just jotted a few of these things down, there were more, and I'm thinking that, you know, perhaps maybe once a month, we dedicate some time just for discussion of those types of items?
Yeah. So we made any, sort of, maybe we're kind of getting outside announcements here, but
Mrs. Polish would not be approved?
No, I know. I hear her in my, my little electrode is going off. Are we going to take up the issue of these virtual school days?
That is, that would, that
Seems a huge morass.
Again, that's something that's on, you know, on my to-do list to bring to the committee to determine.
All right.
It would be to policy subcommittee, but as the RIDE memo said, there was still waiting on guidance from them.
Yeah.
You know, on, they've got to tell us what they think it should look like, and then we can take it up.
Yeah.
You know, but I, when I talked to Mrs. Farnworth about that, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we do talk about these things, not necessarily in the order that they come out of a RIDE memo, but during the course of our business or in our reports, you know, we do address, but I think it's a good idea to, you know, when something
Yep.
I think they're all reading it.
Anyway, and one of the other issues, you know, is the reporting, DCYF reporting, you know, that's
Maybe read it until I get really mad, and then I stop reading it.
There you go.
But I can put an item on the agenda, DCYF issues, and just list them.
DCYF issues?
I'm sorry, I had DCYF on the
Hopefully, we don't have
No, well, I hope we have none of those, but RIDE topics.
Okay.
The RIDE issues, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
And then we can just speak to them freely and not necessarily have an outcome, but just have a conversation on them.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
Thank you. If I may, I just want to make sure everyone knows, school starts soon, and the teachers are back.
That would be Thursday, in case folks didn't know.
It does start Thursday. That the teachers are back, and we are lucky enough to have a lot of community partners come out, including many, actually, we had the chief legal counsel, the administrative lead, the head of training, all from the Department of DCYF. Children, Youth and Families come out and do some training for our teachers.